Absolutely.
I am bored by this already.
He says, hey good time.
Good afternoon.
Thanks a lot, I really appreciate it.
He goes, no, 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 my name's Hey Good Time.
Thank you.
Go ahead here.
Now you can go.
Now I can go, thank you.
Quickly become uninterested in this conversation. That's what she said.
All right, Mr. Bailey.
President.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan. And Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, you mind saying a word of prayer before we start?
Yes. And all that we say and do, the words that are meaningful to all of us is thank you. We're grateful for all of the many and manifold blessings you've bestowed upon each one of us. And, and to this city, we pray for this city as you continue to bless the residents and all that, that are therein. Bless us in a kind and peaceable way. And let us be mindful of the happenings that has taken place in this city. We pray for the Angie Stone family. We pray for them in such a way that they might be embraced by your presence, your grace, and your goodness. Bless us all. We ask it. We claim it. In the mighty and precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Like to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Okay.
You have a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Got a motion in a second and further discussion to add on, seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickman. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. We will begin City Council discussion with item number one, the 2025-20 through 2029 Consolidated Plan, Priorities in Target Neighborhoods. We're bringing again, um, I think virtually for questions or suggestions, Mr. Eric Chatham with Lee, he's the lead consultant for Civitas LLC. And you'll recall a recent opportunity you had with him to discuss the consolidated plan. I know Felicia Kilgore, our community development director, her team are here as well.
I'm asking you this in a loop through the interview again. Um, yes, Pat. So we're finally looking at our previous discussion with our sort of initial recommendations for this consolidated plan. You may recall from our previous conversations, we were summarizing at that point some key demographic and housing market information that is included in this plan. We also have that feedback and a variety of community input sessions and an online survey. Uh, so with that feedback, with consultation with staff and of course, our sessions previously together, we've prepared a, a very brief overview.
Thank you.
To summarize where we believe those priorities and goals should be, um, and then to get, uh, further input or potential use of target neighborhoods. So we didn't have a real robust, um, response on, on our survey, but we did have several, uh, very important, uh, and positive feedback, uh, sessions out in the community. With that feedback, of course, affordable housing continues to be the top priority from resident responses. With new affordable rental and mortgage assistance being the, the top, uh, response, as well as down payment assistance and rehabilitation of owner occupied housing. You'll see that that, uh, is certainly in alignment with our previous conversations and staff expectations and, and what staff sees every day, uh, running these programs. And that will continue to be our top priority utilizing these funds.
So of the-
And then here are the public services. You may recall our CDVG program, we, we are limited-
Eric, I'm sorry, I'm, I know it's probably hard for you to tell if there's a question Dr. Bustles has a comment.
Yeah, of the 125 responses, how many were from providers and how many were from the actual public?
This is actual public. We had, um, about 20 separate responses from, um, providers, uh, stating.
Okay.
I, I can give that full summary to you as well.
Okay. Hi Eric, can you make your screen full so we can see the full presentation, please?
Yes, sure, when I do that, I just can't see you, uh, it blocks my camera view.
Oh, nevermind.
It's okay.
Nevermind.
They're about.
Just, just interrupt me if there's a question, it, it is real tiny from, from my side. Um, so on, with public services, we certainly acknowledge that this is a top priority from our providers and our residents. Staff sees that as well. Unfortunately, the CDVG regulations limit us to only 15% of our CDVG allocation going towards the, the bigger category of public services. Um, to some extent, your HOPA grant also provides supportive services to those individuals. But, um, as it relates to programs on the whole or, or for our residents, we're very limited with our allocation. Um, so within the public services, this is again from community response, uh, mental health services, homeless services, and childcare services. Uh, those are fairly in alignment with, uh, what staff has seen in the past from applications from different agencies, different programs run by the city as well. And then sort of with that, public services, a bit of a, a transition, if you will, to economic development. So job training, job readiness, uh, was also one of the top public service categories. And that segues well to our third priority, uh, again, as it relates to the resident feedback around economic development. So here's our recommendation, uh, culminating with council's previous conversations, our data collection, working with staff, uh, and community feedback. For your CDVG program, a large percentage of those funds are always going to be used with public facilities and infrastructure. So continuing to renovate and expand and improve existing facilities and infrastructure should, should remain a, a top priority. And then the biggest one with our home program and then a second substantial allocation out of CDVG, is all things related to preserving and developing affordable housing. So you see on the right-hand side there, we have a few more specific goals. So let's just call your attention to some of the programs we discussed previously under homeownership and rental development. Uh, but also with those opportunities can be, uh, comes down payment assistance, uh, and potentially in some cases, rental assistance programs. But this is also where you'll find, uh, continuation of the CDVG funded code enforcement and removal of slum and blighted properties in, in our neighborhoods. And then continuing to provide for the owner occupied housing rehab program, which of course is a very popular program. Then public services, so very similar, our top three here, uh, in alignment, uh, with the public. Our goal there and priority is the housing and supportive services for persons with HIV and AIDS. Of course, this is, uh, works specifically for our HOPA program. Then increased economic opportunities. Um, we discussed that the city's funded this through CDVG over the years. Uh, we, we've had some programs come and go, uh, but there was discussion about providing, as I mentioned, uh, increased job training options, uh, technical assistance for small business startups, and potentially a facade improvement program in certain targeted, uh, business districts within the city. And then finally, uh, effective program administration. Of course, the city takes a portion of each of these grants for administration. And so to sort of match up well with HUD's reporting criteria, we allocate those funds, of course, to the goal of successfully managing those programs. Having a pause here for a moment, see if there's any feedback on our recommendations for priorities and goals.
Uh, yes, Eric, this is Tyler speaking. I have a question regarding providing removal of slum and blight. Um, this may be a staff question though. What additional funding would be needed for that? I know a lot of times this stuff gets tied up and probate and that's really the reason behind us not being able to remove those properties. How would additional funds dedicated to that help against improving?
Slum and blight?
Yeah.
We've historically used it, Mr. Bailey, for demolitions. Um, we've had a really robust demolitions program through code enforcement with the, um, collaboration with community development. So that would be the main way. That off the top of my head. I mean, the staff may want to speak to others, but that's been a very successful program.
Once we get through all the others, yeah. And one of our struggles always is, you know, the system takes such a long time to get through, um, in getting some of those and some of those areas that, you know, really can make a difference if we could remove that.
Right.
I think last year we appropriated Ms. Wilson, I think, what, almost $600,000 towards that program?
Yeah, I think there were some ARPA dollars that also supplemented it, so.
But we've been trying to be aggressive.
Could any of that be used legally to help speed the process along, whether it's outsourcing or?
That's a good question, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean-
Outsourcing the legal work to speed-
The legal work. Hmm.
That of-
I think it's not, well.
It ends up being a lot of, we buy, we tell them you need to do something and then they wait till the 29th day to start doing something and their time starts over or they sell the property. If they sell the property, then they have to start the process over, so, um.
That is-
I think that's right, I don't know that it's the-
That's become a challenge with some of those properties that never finish.
I think it's the legal staffing of it, it's the literal time, the system itself, yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson. There's a growing need, uh, of course, in the city for mental health services. Um, affordable housing is one of the buzzwords and we certainly need, certainly need that kind of, uh, that kind of attrition within the city of Columbia. What about mental health services and the amount, dollar amount, perhaps? Uh, all of that can be, all of that can be, we've had some folk to graduate from, from mental health services up into affordable housing and they are able to get a house and that sort of thing. What about mental health services?
Right now, I think the way that these dollars touch it is through sub recipient agreements.
Through what now?
Through sub recipient agreements and I'd have to let the staff maybe speak to which organizations historically we funded. Um, but they have to go to the mic to do that. You have to go to the mic for me, Dolly, I'm sorry. Thank you.
We currently fund Mercy. Um, currently our, uh, allocation to them is $100,000 for this current year. So we've been consistently funding them over the last three to four years.
Can you tell us what Mercy does?
Yes, um, they assist-
Who's that Tina?
Can you tell us what Mercy, what they do?
Um, Mercy is a mental health facility. Uh, they provide, um, all ranges of mental health from, um, all age groups. Uh, they also have supportive housing that they provide, uh, for, uh, different individuals. So they're pretty much at full service right now. They are assisting as a part of this current grant, um, with mental health services, uh, for the rapid shelter as well. So they're serving, uh, the individuals there as well as transitions. So they're all over, um, but they're serving, um, quite a large population.
Is it possible to get some type of documentation from Mercy that says, your $100,000 is enabling us to do X, Y, Z?
Yes, we can, I mean, we currently have, um, our performance measures, uh, whatever they have, um, applied for. Uh, we certainly can give you that.
I would like to see that just in case.
Well, you know, Mercy is, is also the recipient of the majority of our mock money. They, they are pretty much our, our center for supportive housing and have been. So they provide a plethora, so they're leveraging our dollars as well.
I guess what I'm getting at is, let's suppose that they were able to do more than I think they could with $100,000. That would mean they could do more than I think they could with $200,000, which means they could do more than I think they could with a million dollars. So anyway, I just want, it'd be nice to get a, get my arms around what $100,000 does when it comes to mental health.
Because it could, it could be larger.
Very bigger, right.
Could be larger.
Yeah.
But it would be based upon those things that Dolly will send to you.
And again, I know there's two types of organizations. There's those that, that tend to be able to do more with less and there's probably those that do less with more. So, so, you know, I, I always get those things from, uh, Harvest Hope and it says, you know, somehow 50, 55 cents can feed a family of four. So, you know, and you're, you're like, wow, how's that possible? But anyway, so all I'm saying is, you know, what, what are, what are we getting for $100,000? And if it's expandable, maybe that's something we look at down the road.
Because that population, and the reason, I'm glad you're talking about that, Peter. And I'm glad you're, you're able to provide that kind of information. But the population, the mental, mental stability and health of our community is enlarging itself.
Well, and that's also a good point too. Can you sit there and say, okay, so if we're affecting this amount of people?
For a hundred thousand.
But there's this many people out there.
That's correct.
And what are the services they really need and, and how do, how can we deploy?
Now, just remember that this is just three pots of money that we're talking about. This is not all the money that is with other partnerships and leverage. This is just, you know, CDVG home and HOPA money.
I'm thinking down the road to where we want to go with a more complex and, and, um, wide ranging, uh, services, uh, location and, 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 you know, how, how do we, how do we get what we need and, and how do we connect those two dots together?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, would you say that discussion fits under 3A?
Yeah, absolutely. Mental health services fall under that public service. Uh, certainly as it relates to CDVG, that's, uh, falls under the public service cap. Uh, reminder, our, we're limited to 15% of our annual CDVG allocation to all public services. So, uh, you know, that, which includes youth programs and job and training programs, uh, in mental health, uh, programs. So a lot falls under that category unfortunately, so we're, we're very limited.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, transitioning now, in our previous conversation, I believe we had prepared a memo for you, uh, with some potential, uh, proposed neighborhood focus areas. Um, we went back and also added, you can see on the screen, and I believe you have a, a page, five page memo with a little more detail about this neighborhood. You can see where we added with this little blue triangle icon. Um, the vacant parcels that, that the city currently owns, uh, throughout these neighborhoods. So you can see there's, there is definitely some concentration, uh, of those vacant parcels that, uh, as we discussed, we would use CDVG or a combination of CDVG and home funds to make those lots, uh, available for redevelopment through potentially an RFP process. We're working with both our, uh, for-profit and nonprofit affordable housing, uh, partners. Um, with that being said, I want to remind you that HUD does not require local jurisdictions to allocate funds based on target geography. Uh, while we might have, uh, an abundance of pro, programs or projects being carried out in particular neighborhoods, we do not have to set those boundaries. Uh, states do however, have to allocate, whether it's by region or by county, et cetera. The reason I give you that is historically, we have had a few target neighborhoods. But when you elect to do that in your consolidated plan, which then guides you for the next five years, you have to estimate the percentage of your annual funds every year that will be used in each one of the target neighborhoods. So that winds up limiting what we can or can't fund because we're trying to meet these little, uh, self-inflicted, if you will, uh, set-asides by neighborhood. So with the uncertainty of these funds and the, and, uh, the turmoil, if you will, with HUD right now, I would recommend against adding anything that would make this more restrictive or complicated for the city to have flexibility with using these funds, uh, in the next five years. So what, again, while these neighborhoods might be in fact where the city is doing the majority of CDVG, uh, investments and doing housing redevelopment and housing renovation, we would recommend against specifically identifying target neighborhoods because of that requirement to set aside specific dollar amounts or at least percentages of funding every year. Uh, happy to dive in further, I believe, again, you have in front of you a memo that has a little bit more detail about each of these target areas. These are the, uh, the five, if you will, that we little bit down to with staff, uh, over the last couple of weeks since our presentation.
And Eric, thank you. I mean, I think for us, you know, obviously, long-term, we, we're not going to be dependent on HUD for funding. I mean, we're looking at alternative ways to address this issue so that we really can address it because there's a large amount of empty lots across the city. And obviously utilizing where we can with CBG, and I think these areas are good target areas that gives us an opportunity to leverage. But, um, I appreciate your advice on, on not trying to complicate it more. It's already complicated enough to use HUD funding. So hopefully, as, as we continue to create these partnerships that we're working on, it'll allow us to have a lot more flexibility and more resources to bring to the table, really to start building back, um, these, these neighborhoods that have, for the most part, a lot of them have been abandoned over, over time. I mean, most of these lots that we're targeting and talking about have been empty for a long time. And so trying to build back, which will help us address all types of needs. I mean, we need housing in every level, but I hear you, what you're saying, and I think that's, well, the advice is well heard and thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you might have any further questions on these? I mean, I think these are all the areas that we discussed, obviously, and, you know, obviously, we're already doing things and most of them already. Um, so.
Blue Lion Street MLK area, so once you start, I agree with, you know, there's no winners or losers, they're all important, so.
And I agree too, because when we look at the Oak Claire redevelopment, it's like 28 neighborhoods. So we, we're giving ourselves extra hurdles and work to identify specific areas and then having to allocate, so. I'm perfectly fine with that. Mr. Eric?
Moving away. Very good. Um, if there's no further questions or comments on that, I appreciate that feedback. Um, all in thanks to, again, we discussed in our previous conversation, I'm sure you're all well aware, still waiting on the federal budget to be passed. Uh, presuming that they pass a top line budget at least, uh, with next week's, uh, deadline for the continuing resolution, we'll at least know what HUD, uh, will, how much will be allocated to each of these programs at the federal level and then we can make some reasonable assumptions for our budget purposes. So just, our budget currently, just to share with you, uh, based on our current priorities and goals, but with the 2024 allocation, this is how our funding would break, would break down. Um, so this is just for information purposes at this point. Certainly when we have our allocation, we'll be back in front of you with more specifics. So in the CDVG side, 20% is the, the limitation for admin and planning. And that does help cover some of the, uh, additional admin for home and HOPA programs. So this is a bit overlapping of all three programs. The 15% public services cap, then the public facilities and the infrastructure, uh, largely, uh, city projects, then housing programs and code enforcement, rounding out the budget there.
So it is possible that-
Stop, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is very possible that this could be significantly lower this year than it was last year.
It could?
Yes, that, that's absolutely a possibility, um, for what it's worth, and it's not worth much. The Senate and House bills that they took to reconciliation fully funded the T-HUD bill, which is where these funds, uh, are specifically located. Uh, so that was some positive news as it began reconciliation, but that was at the top of the, the bill and, and so we really have no clue how that's going to, uh, transpire through reconciliation.
The other question will be is, you know, is part of the, the overall kind of trying to deregulate stuff, will they make it easier for us to use these funds and less regulatory around it? Which has been one of the reasons why the dollars don't stretch like they should. So I'm hoping we get, you know, both.
It feels like, it feels like that's, that's a potential outcome in a lot of places, is that there's just more pass-through money and less, less strings attached to every dollar.
Which has been a struggle for us with a lot of the programs. It costs us twice as much to do things, um, by using those federal dollars and so.
I do understand why they have strings attached because it, it, it makes people-
Yeah, but some of the layers that they're on there and some of the things that we're required to do, just, they run a cost up. So, I mean, if you look at some of the flood relief programs, some of the things, it costs you twice as much for things. So we get, we get to help less people. So that's why I think for us, our goal needs to be continued to work with, with the groups that we're partnering with to look at the alternative ways to, to do a lot of this, um, so that we can really make an impact. Because if we're waiting on this every year, we're never going to get anything done.
And, and I'll remind you, and you see at the bottom of the screen here on CDVG, because of the way the city had set up, uh, the various housing assistance programs over the decades now, the city does generate substantial revenue or program income, uh, for these programs. So that certainly is giving the city of Columbia a lot more flexibility, uh, when it comes to running these programs and the uncertainty of, of the next couple of years' budgets. The home program, the, the budget is, is much simpler. Um, the city can take 10% for admin. Again, you use CDVG largely to, as coverage for all three programs. So you don't take that full amount out of home. The CHODO set aside, uh, again, you're required to, to, to set aside, uh, about 5%. Um, typically, uh, for CHODO set asides, you guys have some good nonprofit partners that you typically work with. So that's not been too problematic. And then the balance is under our affordable housing development, which is where we receive proposals each year and vet them, uh, on a project by project basis. And likewise, substantial program income generated through the home program over the years. The HOPA program, this is, this is essentially our, exactly our 2024 budget, uh, as it stands, with these specific allocations to the various partner agencies. Reminder that, uh, the HOPA program is the one program that the city runs of these three outside its borders. You, you run this for multiple counties, uh, because only the state receives these allocations, uh, in addition to Columbia. So with that, I'm happy to answer any further questions or take comments. Uh, again, as we have more clarity on the actual allocations, we'll be back in front of you with specific, uh, funding recommendations in the full draft if I'm clear.
Anybody have any further questions for Eric today?
I know the follow-up is, is giving a little more insight on those responses. I think it'd be good for us to, to be able to see that.
Some data on Mercy.
Yeah. I'd like to see where, you know, what they said, where they came from. I think it'd be very important, make sure input. Does anybody have any other questions? Eric?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great afternoon and we'll follow up with staff shortly.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Mayor, we're going to move, oh, there's Darren. Giving him a little grace, but he's here. Okay, we've got presentation number two, the Black Expo update. Mr. Darren Thomas, president of Thomas Media Group LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, friends. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to come in. I wanted to give you an update on some exciting news. Um, as many of you are aware, we, we take great pride in how we serve all citizens in the state of, uh, well, the state, but in the city of Columbia. Um, and, and recognizing the fact that over the past 25 years and hosting this event, Black Expo, um, we, we've come to real- we've come to realize that so many of our citizens in the city have used Black Expo as an opportunity to focus on health concerns. So much so that in recent years, while our focus has always been on economic development, business development, we've had to put a lot of effort around what we offer with our health partners. Most recently, I was at an event, and Mayor Rickman shared a stat that I was blown away. Columbia, South Carolina, specifically certain zip codes are centered as the number one diabetic amputation center in the country. Now, subsequent conversation with Mr. Anthony Jackson, the president of Prisma, CEO, said, no, Darren, it's the world. He said, data suggests that Columbia is center point for the world. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I started asking myself, as well as our team, what can we do? Particularly with the fact that we have partnerships with Prisma, with MUSC, and our board went to work to determine, okay, how can we shape this? Because our data clearly states that we have people that attend Black Expo that will use it for their assessments. You will be pleased to know that since those conversations have developed, we've gone back to Prisma, back to MUSC. We flew to New Jersey, met with Johnson &amp; Johnson Pharmaceuticals. They have committed to bringing their health disparities, Health Challenge Unit to Columbia this year. This will be the first time in its history that they will have been in the city of Columbia or in the state. Since that time, counsel, Mr. Mayor, we had since had a conversation with Novo Nordis Drug Company. They have committed their education resources to be a part of this endeavor. Mr. Mayor, counsel, we then met with the South Carolina Commissioner of Agriculture. The Commissioner of Ag has committed to, as a part of our focus on diabetes prevention with diet, exercise, and education. The Commissioner of Ag has committed to providing 2,000 bags of South Carolina-based produce to all attendees at Black Expo and a chef to provide food sampling with the hope that we would educate citizens from Columbia on healthy diets with healthy produce. We realize that a part of the challenge for us are food deserts, food scarcity. We're hopeful that this initiative will help us in the city. Our goal, quite frankly, and Mr. Mayor, you were savvy in warning me, forewarning me, Darren, let's not target communities. Our goal is to make certain that we address this from all aspects of Columbia, whether they're from Shannon, wherever. Our goal is to make certain that these resources are available. Since that time, Mr. Mayor, I met with Ms. Veronica Walker. We, as a part of our strategy, and by the way,
That is your strategy.
She is, she is my strategy. She called me on the way over here. We created our Save the Date card. She has since already started meeting with our neighborhood captains to determine how we will address getting individuals strategically to Expo. We have also gone to Comet. Comet has committed to giving us the passes that we need to strategically get individuals from our communities to Black Expo. We feel that this opportunity, coupled with the fact that we know data-wise what we will draw from people outside of the region. But, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I feel that, while I have a fiduciary responsibility to continue to promote the city of Columbia, I also have a responsibility to make certain that we have healthy citizens. And I'm most grateful for your support with this endeavor. And we're hopeful, we're hopeful that the data at the conclusion, we will see the need to move. Johnson &amp; Johnson has asked us to look at a long-term plan for the city of Columbia specifically. My hope is to come back, Mr. Mayor.
I would add to that, because I think it's at a juncture as perfect as you did. You need to let them know that we're working on a Blue Zones plan.
I did, yes, sir.
And we would love for them to participate in that, because that is a long-term plan. And we'd love to sit down with their folks, because once we've done this assessment, which will give us a complete picture of our city, we have an opportunity to work with an endowment to get it funded. And having them help us get to the assessment would be a huge leap forward. The second thing I want to add to that is that we need to get you connected with our team at Instacart so that they can be part of Black Expo, so that they can also be there to let people know about the program that we've set up, getting the delivery, which also takes some of the transportation challenges out of folks, getting access to groceries and the needs that they have in certain parts of our city. So we'll definitely get you connected with there.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll share this. Unbeknownst to me, and our team, the Commissioner of Ag, and this entire campaign entitled Change SC has made it clear that they want to be, have a presence in Prisma and MUSC to provide fruits, vegetables, produce to patients as a part of their healthy outreach. We see it as the, lack of a better word, perfect storm of all of these compartments coming together. And I'll say this, Mr. Mayor, I think there's an opportunity, perhaps, we've spoken with the folks out of Dover-Dellaware with AstraZeneca. They have now expressed interest in what we're doing. They've also expressed it a long-term opportunity. Maybe there's a conversation that could be had with AstraZeneca and some of their foundation funding for our Blue Zones here, here in the city. But again, and I'll also share, counsel, Mr. Mayor, this weekend as our Charleston Black Expo, we will, we will attempt to use that as a pad to learn from, a launchpad to learn from. But so many eyes are on Columbia and what we do here in May. But I got to tell you, Veronica has hit the ground running, Mr. Mayor. It's amazing.
It doesn't surprise any of us, I promise you.
She called me, she said, Darren, the Save the Date, I've already got, my boss has already said it's approved. We'll go ahead and start getting it out there, and then we have a follow-up meeting on the 17th. The folks from Johnson &amp; Johnson will be in. I met with the executive vice president from Detroit with Prisma Hospital, Ms. Cheryl Smith, this past week. She was at the groundbreaking of the School of Medicine. So we had a long conversation about her presence and what it can mean. But again, I'm grateful, Mr. Mayor, counsel, for your support. And please know, we are, we're very serious and committed to what you have afforded us in empowering our citizens, but also starting with their health.
What has MUSC and Prisma, what have they offered to do as part of this?
Well, so, good question, Mr. Councilman. MUSC, so there's always the battle between footprint and who, and we got them to say, hey, guys, at the end of the day, what's more important is where we land in terms of making healthy citizens. So all of their health disparity, their mobile units they're bringing in, what we've also asked them to do are our Ask a Doctor campaign, our surgical, our cancer units. They are actually, we're at a point now, we're working with the Nurses Association, the University of South Carolina School of Public Health, just as a great example. We're creating health passports for all of our persons that attend, because what we want to do is make certain that they at least get one or two, I'm sorry, two or three assessments done. We'll use that and we'll incentivize them as well. But both entities have asked, have given us a larger list of those things that they'll bring in and that they'll have a presence with. In fact, it's almost weekly, we get an email from them saying, hey, our oncology wants to come in, or our geriatric unit. Part of what Prisma's asked us to do is, and this is where we've got to be careful, and I will.
Careful.
Careful. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilman. There's a desire for us to focus on Sumter. And again, we want individuals to come from outside the region. But my focus and hard drive is making certain that we get a lot of my assessments from the city, from citizens in the city addressed then. Because I want to be able to report back to you what Prisma and their data is saying. We also invested in a technology too, Councilman, that affords us the opportunity. Six months from now, three months from now, we'll be able to tag, there's a, with pushpin notifications, we'll be able to assert, address and reach out to those individuals that have attended Black Expo to follow up with them for assessments as well.
What I was wondering is, going back to MUSC and Prisma, so I'm assuming that the testing for diabetes is pretty simple, right?
Yes, sir.
So if that's the case, wouldn't they be able to have the people that attend Black Expo continue to get that testing and kind of benchmark them? So they benchmark them at Black Expo. Okay, so everybody that's here, if you go through this testing, you're, this is who you are.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So to me, that would be so powerful for each individual to have their own, you know, data about who I am, and if you
Absolutely.
if you do these things, and they're not, you know, it is complicated, you know, my wife starts talking about like protein and carbohydrates, and I shut down. I don't understand that. I do understand food, but I don't understand, you know, so, but I do understand fruits and vegetables.
Yes, sir.
I can understand that. So I guess all I'm saying is, it would be really, I think, powerful and repeatable for everywhere, that if we could get Prisma and/or MUSC to provide testing for the people who sign up for, maybe it's once a quarter, maybe every six months or whatever, and really help folk. That's correct. You know, put themselves on a pathway to health.
One of the things that Darren and I have talked in depth about the program and the availability of Prisma providing that kind of data.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And which could be very, very helpful in terms of our community and citywide.
Absolutely.
It provides the kind of mechanism that would certainly encourage greater participation as it relates to diabetes.
Absolutely.
Food is fine.
Yes, sir.
But if you've got terrible food, you're going to have diabetes.
Yes, sir.
Simple as that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my history is carbohydrates.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It takes a little while to do that. Takes a little while to figure out how carbohydrates are going to affect your sugar, your diabetes. Or sugar ain't sweet.
Sugar ain't sweet.
It is very important in our conversation
Yes, sir.
that that kind of emphasis related to health is very important, man.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Of course, we're 100% in, man. I'm 100% in.
And, Mr. Councilman, to your point, Councilman, as well, I'm sorry not to make light of it, but that is the starting point as they see it, because a part of what they challenged us with was not what happens on May 17th, is it what happens beyond that? And they've challenged us, which is the data we use to go and present to Johnson &amp; Johnson and say, okay, how are we going to touch people's lives? And which propelled us and compelled us to really secure that data, the technology, because we want to be able to address that, and not just for that, but also breast cancer, any of the indexes that need to be addressed.
You're 100% right. We have the best healthcare in the world as long as you're sick.
That's right.
And if you're not sick, then we can't help you until you get sick. That's what's got to change, is to help people stay healthy, not help, you know, not watch people get sick. And then we take care of them. It's crazy.
I will say that to the point specifically, and I'm not speaking for Prisma, obviously, but Cheryl, y'all are totally on her radar. So she's trying to get her bearings in the Columbia market, but their new VP, I don't know her whole title, for marketing communications. We had dinner last week, a group of us with her, and she is totally like laser-focused. She was boots on the ground all last week, really great person from what I can tell out of Detroit, that she's based in Greenville, but I think the acknowledgement is that the Columbia market needs to have boots on the ground from a community engagement perspective. And so she even texted me this morning that Prisma Health is hiring a community engagement strategist, which she had told me that when we met. And the key responsibilities include identifying and managing sponsorships and building relationships in the Columbia, South Carolina market. And she sent this because she's wanting good people to apply. The post-it inspires the end of the month. But we talked about the project, and I think she's really trying to get her arms around, you know, meeting all of you and getting to know what the, what role they can play, but with the data that backs it up, and acknowledging that maybe that hadn't occurred as much in the past.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you so much. My hope, not to inundate you, but prior to, maybe in April, I'll give you a quick update and continue to work with Ms. Walker and continue to make Columbia healthy.
And when is Black Expo?
May 17. And, Councilman, we'll make certain that we work through Ms. Wilson's office and Ms. Hammond to make certain that we get all information to you prior to as well.
Great.
Good luck on your event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
No place left.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, man. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Darren. Our next presentation, another great partner, the Five-Year Plan and Operational Update by Mr. Andy Markard, the CEO of Adventure. Andy?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. And counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me and letting me speak to you all for a few minutes and to talk about a few things that we have got going on at Adventure. And I think the big one, and the place in front of you, there's several things that we wanted to deliver, and the big one is our Five-Year Plan. I cringe at the term strategic plan, because usually it's a binder that gathers dust for about five years, and then you look at it five years later and you go, what did we do and what didn't we do? And it gives your board and your staff something to do in the meantime and plan for. But this document that we have and our guiding principles around our Five-Year Plan are definitely our North Star. It's really going to take us into the future and guide our visitor experience, but also our solvency from a financial standpoint and everything we want to achieve for the organization. And it was a collaboration with our staff, our guests, with visitor feedback, and as well as our board. So we're excited about it. It is going to be our North Star and our decision-making tool, like I said. But we are also at an inflection point with the museum. And the reason is because the second generation is coming to Adventure. And what I mean by that is, the kids who came to Adventure 21, 21 years ago, who were, you know, maybe eight or nine at the time, they're starting to bring their kids to the museum. And that sounds great, except for there's a nostalgia factor that's built into those experiences. And we want to make sure that we keep a lot of the core components. Obviously, Eddie's not going anywhere. The fire truck's not going anywhere. There's certain staples to the museum that are always going to remain. But the key is, is that we're providing 21st century experiences, and we're reevaluating what our goals were from the beginning, and then setting forth new experiences for that second generation, so that the second generation is just as excited to come to the museum. By the end of this Five-Year Plan, a chunk of our visitors will be that second generation that, whose parents are bringing them and going, well, when I was a kid, this was what was at Adventure. I think the big thing for us is, we are, from a content perspective, is expanding our age range to 12. Currently, our age cuts off at about nine or 10. And we felt it was important to be in lockstep, not only with what our visitors wanted, but also we have the State Museum, who are great partners across the parking lot. They're going through a major renovation process. They're trying to reach down in their market, and we're trying to expand our market. So if you come to 11 Gervais Street, and you have a choice of where to go, there's going to be something for everyone in between the two of us. Our flight is a great, is a target, our Makerspace, our two key components to expanding that age range. We haven't tapped the aviation market yet in the state of South Carolina, and that's something that we feel is ripe for development and ripe for creating better and better And that's something that we feel is ripe for development and ripe for, um, uh, creating better and, and better content, especially when it comes to workforce development and career, uh, curiosity. On top of that, we obviously are very excited and, and cannot wait for the redevelopment of the Riverwalk and the canal. Um, obviously we have a front row seat to that. We're going to be at the epicenter for people coming to experience that space. Um, we're looking into how do we interpret that area? How do we interpret the space? How do we partner with, again, our friends at the State Museum to make sure that we're bringing to life, uh, the story of, of the Riverwalk and the canal? And because there's a ripe history that goes along with that. Um, but also we have a terrace that is, you know, 15,000 square feet worth of space that is empty right now. And, and it overlooks that property and, um.
Looked good with some heavy equipment out there.
Well, you know, and that thing is.
Kids love heavy equipment. I don't care what the generation is. You let them get all over a backhoe and something else and be all over it.
It's one of like the most popular things in Vegas, right? Is you can rent a backhoe for a day, right? Like and, and go play in a bunch of dirt.
Hear that, Robert?
So.
Yeah, weekend rodeo.
But we're excited about the Riverwalk and the canal and, and producing content that goes. I mean, the way we like to talk about it is we're at the front, we're the front porch to Columbia. People come in across Gervais Street Bridge, they see us. And if we can do some really remarkable things with that outdoor space. It also, um, provides more consistent, uh, attendance throughout the year because a lot of times we are the rainy day destination and we want to grow beyond that and provide outdoor experiences that make us a, a bright, sunny, beautiful day destination as well. Um, safety is a big priority for us in the coming years and has been already. Um, we are, um, we, we've already upgraded our camera system. We are continuing to do that, there'll be cameras all over the building and, and new technology with our security system as well as all new exterior doors. Um, that funding came from, uh, the state. And so we're, we're expanding our revenue sources as well from that regard. But also, um, our group entry and our front entry are getting, uh, reorganized as well. So if you, if you come to the museum and you haven't been in a, a while, um, our front entry has been redesigned for better sightlines for our staff and our guests. Creates less of a congestion point at the beginning and we moved our gift shop as well. And then the group entry will be in our old cafe space. So groups will now come into behind the building. When we have 100 kids on field trips, they'll have lockers. They'll have a place to put their lunches and everything else and a place to gather and eat lunch afterwards. But it, it separates them out so that there's less of a visitor intrusion piece from, from the front entry standpoint. Um, we also are, uh, looking at expanding our outreach. Uh, that program is, is basically been shuttered since COVID. And we are just looking at what do schools, what, what, what are they looking for? What do they want? What we're hearing so far is that they want more directed outreach, less of a presentation style in a gymnasium and more of like an ongoing after-school program where we're coming in and delivering an eight-week, you know, program where there's pre and post evaluations and, and really working to make sure it's aligned with, uh, education standards and, um, providing the teachers with tools that we leave behind, right? So they can continue to, to bring their textbooks to life with our content. And then we also are looking at expanding our ed studio and, and exhibit production. It's, it, it, we have, uh, very limited resources in South Carolina, the whole state, when it comes to, uh, content production for museums and, and otherwise, and so in interactive activities. We're finding it's, it's an easy market to address, but, but we have to put together the business plan that makes sense for the museum. It doesn't mean we're going to go compete with like really big shops. It means that, you know, the State Museum or Children's Museum in the upstate might need a case or might need a small project or, or another manipulative. And we have the team to do that, but we need to grow the business side of it to, to make that happen. Um, finally, the other piece that you have in front of you is a brand new exhibit, uh, that's funded. Our goal is $4 million. It's already been funded up to $3.5 million thanks to our friends at Richland County as well as the EPA. Um, this expansion is a 4,000 square foot indoor/outdoor expansion of the museum. It, we, um, we look at interpretive gaps in the community, recycling, reusing, circular economy, um, uh, the environment. These are all things that, um, we felt needed to be addressed with the age range that we have in the museum. And what better way to get kids interested in anything but by using dinosaurs? So we'll have dinosaurs throughout the exhibit that, um, that will be made out of recycled materials. We get people in the museum all the time and say, they don't ask, when are the dinosaurs coming? They say, where are your dinosaurs? And so, um, we're going to address another request that we have from our visitors. But it's, it's a super impressive exhibit. We're scheduled to open it in a year from now. Um, and it will have other layers of expansion built into it so that if we raise more money, there will be opportunities to, to continue to grow that, uh, exhibit and that message throughout the, the museum. I think I've hit most of what I want to talk about. Is there, are there any questions for me?
I got a question. Andy, appreciate it. Just re-upped my membership last week. Um, enjoyed the kids museum. You got one in Myrtle Beach too, huh?
That's correct.
How's that one doing?
It's, it's okay. It's a storefront. It actually, it used to be the, um, South Carolina Children's Museum. It was opened in 1994 as the first children's museum in the state. Adventure took over operations in 2017. We relocated the museum to Market Common in 2019 and then we expanded that location in 2022. Um, there are ripe opportunities there, but right now that, uh, space is only 8,000 square feet. So it comes nowhere close, close to what we have in Columbia.
I'd say.
But, um, but we have good relationships with the folks in Myrtle Beach and we're hoping for an expansion there.
So what's the new gallery, the Dino Gallery? What is that replacing? You said the fire truck's not going away, right?
Right. Um.
Parks if that did.
Yeah, it breaks some, you know, the grocery store, Eddie, the fire truck, you know, there's things that we could never get rid of. Um, that space is our temporary gallery. Actually, there's nothing in it right now.
Okay.
It's actually past the fire truck. Um, there used to be several things back there throughout the years. And the latest one was we had our Snowville exhibit there, which was a seasonal exhibit in the winter. That was the last thing that was there. Right now it's empty.
When was the Snow exhibit there?
Uh, I think the last one was, I, 2020, maybe 2019? It's been a little bit.
What's, what is stopping you from programming the 15,000 square foot patio for, for stuff you want to do?
The roof.
The roof? The outdoor patio overlooking the canal?
Uh-huh. The, the roof, it's, it's, the roof sits on top of the, um, our canal room, which some of you have been in and had meetings at, um, but it leaks. But also the pavers that are on top of it are, because it's sloped, the pavers make everything even across the space and they are held up by two to three to four inch plastic inserts. And those inserts break if you, we were to bring in heavy equipment, they, they break. So, uh, we really can't, we, we need to invest in redoing.
Square footage, office or meeting square footage underneath that patio?
That's the roof to that space, but the patio is what, it's all the same, same thing. So.
Kind of a design error there.
Little, yeah, but I don't know if it was ever, I mean, I, I think now it would have been thought of differently. But, I mean, you know, it's, it's a beautiful space. It just needs, um, it needs to be reinforced and.
Do you have a structural, um, plan or feasibility study done to figure out how to make it more structural, to have concerts and stuff?
Not yet. We need, we need, uh, that, I mean, that's, we're at the infancy of that whole project. So there's a lot that needs to go into it.
Right. And then my one other question for you, Andy. You do coordinate with the city about beautification, litter pickup and everything. I think we're in charge of the parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You have, you have consistent communication with Henry and the parks team about when they need to come and pick up, you know, litter? Give them a heads up.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we take care, I mean, we, we also make sure that like, I mean, in the busy summer months, I mean, Henry's team doesn't have the capacity to come out every day and we'll have, you know, all kinds of mess in the parking lot after a busy Saturday. So we'll, we'll send our own team out there to help and, and we, but they're very, very good about being routine and coming in and, and, uh, making sure that on their schedule, everything is, is picked up and cleaned up and pruned and trimmed and everything else. And then we also chip in on to kind of meet them halfway, just to make sure the presentation of the building and everything coming up is, is adequate.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
In reference to the second location in Myrtle Beach, in close proximity, where, where did that relate to the fires?
Good, good question. Um, thank you, Mr. McDowell. It's, um, not very close. Ours is at Market Common, which is by the airport. The big fire that.
The old airport. Is that the new?
It's, well, it's both, right? Like, yeah. The, the Market Common is on the old military base where they redeveloped into shopping centers. And then, um, the new, uh, the, the current airport's really right there as well. Carolina Forest is sort of north, northeast, west from there.
So 501 towards Conway.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, this is coming back this way?
Yep. That's right.
Thank you.
So Andy, if you had 177,000 visitors, how many of those would, are considered local?
About 60%.
Is the growth for more local people or more visitors?
We like visitors. I mean, I think, I, I, we like both, but, I mean, I think we have room to grow on the, on the tourism market. Um, and, and I think everybody sort of defines tourism differently, but we, we look at 50 miles. And, you know, outside of 50 miles, we think that there's definitely growth, especially, you know, our, our capture markets are Augusta and Florence.
And how much revenue is associated with those 177,000 visitors?
About 2 million.
So Teresa, it kind of goes back to that planning session we had where we had.
It does.
Coordinated marketing, which I know we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
So is that, is that developing at this point?
You know, I mean, we, we look at Experience Columbia for a guidepost on making sure that we're all in lockstep with how we're marketing it as attractions and for tourism. I mean, we, we want to set that message and be in alignment with them and as well as SCPRT. Um, but I feel like, I mean, I, I have a lot of opinions on that and I feel like it's a great conversation to start about how we look more collectively from a tourism perspective and all the attractions and what we're doing and what we offer. I mean, I know we look at interpretive gaps and what do, how do we fit in to a family that's visiting for two or three days? Nobody's going to come to Columbia just for adventure. If an exhibit's broken, they'll tell us that. But the, nobody's going to come to Columbia just for adventure. But we, they are going to come to Columbia for everything else that we have to offer. And, and, and the trajectory of the city and where we're going is impalpable. It's exciting. And I mean.
Really key is, is to understand, you know, got to understand who you are.
That's right.
And first, and then try to figure out how you, you know, marketing and messaging.
We know that.
Always, so.
And, and we also know that is just as much as we are another reason to come to Columbia, right? So like collectively as tourism entities, we need to be singing the same song and making sure we're all on the same page because.
But you're part of that parenting community. You know about these places.
That's true. Yeah. And, and I mean, and we have to stay on top of that. That's.
What's the name of the museum? Well, Children's Museum in, in Spartanburg, you know?
It's an, it's a satellite of the Children's Museum of the Upstate.
Yeah, pretty, pretty small.
It's small, yeah. It's a little, it's, I think, and they cap their age range at five.
And their main location is Greenville?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. And we talk to Greenville all the time. Um, Lauren Lunakis, a good friend of mine, she's the CEO there. And, uh, we always are, we're very comparable. So we're about the same size. We get about the same amount of visitors. We're always tracking each other just to see how the market's going and how we're doing for each other.
I've been to both and I think we're head, head above heels.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate that.
Andy, I'm just curious, from, from the surveys you've done with your visitors and stuff, what are they looking for from y'all to enhance that, that would draw? I mean, you know, in 20 minutes, you can be in five counties around here. So obviously we should be able to draw some more folks. And then obviously we've become a travel pattern for a lot of people. And the beauty part about Columbia, geographically, you know, 90% of the state can come here in less than two hours. So we can draw people here. I'm just curious what, what they're saying they'd like to see there that you, you haven't addressed yet in your plan.
I think the, I, there's several ways to answer that question. I think the big thing is, you know, people want interaction and they don't say it, they don't know how to say it. But like we are, and you'll see with our summer campaign, we're going to really lean into this messaging, which is, you know, everybody knows that like, everybody's walked into a restaurant and seen a family all on their phones and like not talking to each other, right? And everybody's knows how connected we are. And what visitors are starving for is interactivity with each other and communication with each other. And like our parents will come in and say something to the effect of, this is great, my kids had fun, but I don't, I don't, they'll say without saying it, I don't know what to do or I didn't have as much interaction. So we have to take the responsibility to make sure that we're providing content that's intriguing enough and good enough and exciting enough to get parents and their kids, teachers and their students, caregivers and children to all interact and, and together. And that's a big cornerstone to our current content development and what we're looking at. It's also a big piece of that age expansion as well because we want to make sure as many people in the family can engage with each other as, as much as possible during their visit.
So is that engagement type, yeah, because I, I, I do get that, you know, we live in an experiential world, not just go to the children's museum world like we grew up in. Um, so is it more important to, to connect with the parents or the kids?
We message to the parents. We try to make sure the kids are, you know.
Does that function?
Yeah. But anymore, you know, the parents want, anymore the parents want the experience too. You know, like we always talk about, it's like the T-shirt model. Like, did you get anybody excited enough to where they want to buy a T-shirt when they leave? You know, like that's kind of that thought where, did we create enough memories that they want to come back? Number one, which helps everything, but also did they have enough, a good enough experience that, you know, we're, we're retaining that in their memory?
I was wondering, thinking about that too. And I was, I was wondering if, do you guys, would it make sense to, to really partner with the zoo or you guys are, are really more of a team where you could have a, like a, the zoo could sell an, uh, adventure slash zoo ticket, you know, to people when they come here? Because the zoo kind of got a little bit of a head start on you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and plus they got more money than you do. So, so would it make sense to, to have a, um, like a tandem ticket?
So we have through Experience Columbia, we have the Culture Pass.
Yeah.
And so they, you know, there, there is that availability. Um, but they, you know, we have a great partnership with the zoo, so we find other ways to partner and, and, and work. We've had some fruitful discussions around sharing content and everything else, but I think it's going to, one of us is going to have to take a, a leap of faith, I think. And obviously they've got major projects and major things going on, so it's probably going to have to be us. And we're trying to figure out what that looks like and how do we make sure that we're present as a, um, community partner, but also an opportunity to let a million people that go through their gates, that adventures are down the road.
For them too, because it's, it gives them a, um, you know, gives them something to, to sell.
They know about us, uh, whenever it's raining and their field trips can't go. They'll send them right over. Looks more happy about it, yeah.
I want to add that in the spirit of this conversation, when you and I met recently, we talked about a number of partnerships, you know, with the city outside of, which further amplifies the, could amplify the marketing of what we're doing, um, internally as a city. Obviously parts and recreation and some programming collaborations.
That's right.
And then outside of the infrastructure that, you know, we're responsible for. And I have a follow-up I will talk about offline about some pressing needs. Um, but the sustainability piece, I think, is becoming a really big topic and of interest. So we've had some recent collaborations with college students in the Midlands with our Public Works Department and our sustainability coordinator, Mary Pat Baldoff is here because I asked them to listen in. You talked about some specific programs to me, I think, that y'all have been, or maybe grant opportunities or.
Yeah, with, with the Fossil Defutures Program, like that has really expanded our, like, reach when it comes to partnering and through content. Some of the funding that we received required that, but also because of those conversations, it really sprung into some actionable items that we were able to do. And, you know, part of our role is to, you know, interpret the world around us, right? And like get kids excited about where they live and where they are, be place-based. And so we look at our programmatic activities as a way to expand that mission beyond just our lab programs and our pop-up programs and whatever we're doing in the museum and go out into public spaces and, and fulfill that obligation and, and, and that messaging in different ways that we're traditionally used to.
Right. So I, I'd love for y'all to connect to see where those touch points might be with us as a city as well as, you know, getting more programming into the community.
Great.
Which I think further our brand and your brand.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
With the RFP for design capabilities for a, a future riverfront park out there, can we keep that in mind, the connectivity component?
A hundred percent.
To really, you know, how we can maybe improve connectivity and offerings on that side of Gervais Street?
Yeah.
As part of the park. I think that'd be fantastic.
Agreed. Absolutely.
Hundred percent agree.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate you all and your partnership.
And Andy, I, I wanted to talk to you and Henry real quickly before you leave, if I could. Okay, thanks.
I knew what he meant.
We go on, we're gonna do the motion. Okay.
Yeah. There's a motion to.
So move.
To go into executive session for legal advice relating to matters, matters covered by attorney-client privilege to sue at the 30-7070A2.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
For PFOs, Resolution 2510 and for matters relating to proposed location expansion of services to encourage location of spans, expansion of industries or other businesses, uh, Project Catalyst. Is there a second? You got a motion in the second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Losel. Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Making up a, making up an order. He has to bring.
I think there.